Call this meeting to order. Mr. Roach, would you please pledge the flag for the Senate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will be canceled. The presentations have been canceled. You've got two sicknesses. Let's get the approval of the ministers. We have a motion.
I'll say it.
Motion is on for the approved minutes of February 7th, regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Presentation will be canceled. Personnel hearing. You need to pass the... Oh, we need to switch. Switch the public comments with the personnel. Okay?
I'll say it.
Okay. So, the motion has been made to switch the public comments in the personnel hearing as part of the section of the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. You want to hear it, Carol? Okay. All right. So, let's do... Let's go ahead and start with our public comments.
Mr. President, would you... I have shared with the Board our policy concerning the public comments. Do you want to share that with the public before they start?
Yes. Yes. Basically, what we're going to... What I'll address is that each participant has five minutes, okay, to speak. And as far as if we're talking about during your statement, let's refrain from... Let's see here. Let's make the statements where they are not lengthy, obscene, offensive, or directed personally at a particular person, okay? But other than that, let's go ahead and start our public comments.
Also, Mr. President, there's kind of two separate delegations.
Yes.
If Ms. Holton wanted to go first, I mean, the delegation for Ms. Holton to West Hamlin. But prior to the other delegation, I'd like to give the Board an update from the last concern that came out of last meeting.
Okay. You want to go ahead and do the delegations for West Hamlin, Ms. Holton, and Ms. West Hamlin? Let's go ahead. We have Sue Burke. Sue Burke?
Some volunteers, parents, teachers, and I are here in support of Ms. Holton tonight. And I would just like to make a comment that I have spoke...
Excuse me. Go ahead, Carol.
Could you come on?
Could you come on? Yes, about speed. Carol.
We're here tonight in support of Ms. Holton. We have a lot of parent volunteers, parents, grandparents, and teachers here tonight. And I just wanted to say that I just can't imagine that the charges against Ms. Holton was a simple reason that I got to speak with her approximately a month ago. And she was telling me about on the news where she saw where a child had been abused. And she actually cried while she was telling me the story. So, I just can't imagine that a teacher like this would be guilty of the charges against her. And knowing Ms. Holton, she's a wonderful teacher. And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Butcher?
I just would like to agree with Sue. I've volunteered for a couple of years over at West Hamlin Elementary. I've never seen her do anything but be professional, caring, and kind to the students. And I just do not see that she would do anything purposely to endanger her child. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Basie?
Actually, I would like to present the Board with a petition in support of Ms. Holton, which contains signatures from the parents, the community, and the D.C. volunteers.
Thank you so much.
And also, my son is in Ms. Holton's class and was there during the incident. And she has gone out of her way to actually help my son. She... My son is a borderline reader. He's making As and Bs in his class, and I'm so scared that he was dropping in reading. He had a very hard time. Within like a week of this happening, she actually went above and beyond. I've asked several people for help. And since his grades weren't so low, he didn't qualify for a lot of extra, you know, tutoring and things like that, she went out of her way. And within a week, he had a tutor at school. And this is a teacher that's really stepped up to help, at least my son. And my son is so distraught over this, it's so sad. He actually witnessed what had happened on the news, didn't really know what was going on, you know? He was there that day, but of course, it doesn't occur to a child that anything could come of it. And he said, "Mommy." He said, "Mommy." He said, "It was just a joke." And now to being mean to Ms. Holton. And that's all I have to say about that. That's all I have to... That's all I need to hear from him to support his teacher.
Thank you. And now we have... Let's see. Hold on. Hold on. Cynthia Base? Just want to make sure that you're... Yeah. What's that, Steve?
I'm Twana's sister. I just want to say that my parents were outstanding citizens, and they worked for the Board for many years. And I know you don't... Can't go on what your parents do or what your brother or sister did, but I do know that Twana's a wonderful person. She would never hurt anybody, any child whatsoever. I've got two boys, and I would spank them when they needed it, and she would say, "Well, now, there's other ways you can, you know, discipline." I'm glad to see that she's got a lot of supporters. And it's sad that this situation happened, but I'm sure she didn't mean anything by it. It was just a joke that went too far, rip and torn, you know? But I do hope that she will... You know, you stay at your department, Harvey, you stay at your job, because she's... She loves her job.
Thank you, Ms. Base. Okay. Now, we are the... You wanted to share that there was a hearing scheduled. Go ahead. Why don't you do it?
The Board wanted the public to know there was a hearing scheduled, and she chose not to have a hearing. That is her right to have one or not to have one. It doesn't mean anything other than the fact the public is knowledgeable that a hearing is given, an opportunity is given, to any employee, as he chose not to have one. Just want to share that with the public. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. We're getting ready to hear the Duval delegation. And... Mr. Roach?
Thank you. At the last meeting, Board members, President Matthews and Board, there was some roach issues related to that that were made more aware from the meeting. And what I have given you, and I'll kind of go through it briefly. The first is simply what has occurred since then. There's been several people involved. And number six, if you could look at number six, Mr. Huff, the County Health Department Sanitarium, Mr. Reagan from the Department of Agriculture, also from Standard, the company that we use for extermination in Lincoln County. Plus, we had an independent, Mr. Alford. I don't know exactly the name of the company, but I think it's related to his name. Also...
Tony Alford.
Tony Alford. Also did come to speak... Speak. To go through the school last Friday. The bottom line for, I guess, the public or the parents in the Duval area is that we have not... Or currently, we do not reach the threshold to do any more spraying. They said, "You don't need to do it. You do not have the threshold to do that." And that's all of them put together, come up with that. We did not spray last weekend. They told us not to spray. Our intentions were to do that. They have made recommendations which were followed, as you can see, from plugging holes, from doing, I think, what is called baiting or something like that. And that's simply putting food down for them to eat. But that is all I can share with the Board at this time. I don't know, based on them, whether we ever eradicate any building of roaches because how they can come in. As far as infestation, that is not the case. We do not have that at Duval. Any questions from Board members?
No.
Also, moving on, I do have a letter that I would like to read, or I said I would read because the faculty senate at Duval wanted to come to them. I did not want to get in them involved in a tit-for-tat type thing. They're professionals. Their job is to, you know, help our children. They agreed to that. But I did agree to read their letter, and I will do that also for the public and the media. Again, this is from the staff, faculty at Duval. If you all let... Allow me to read this. The faculty at Duval would like to respond to the recent attacks on our school and a negative publicity received at Monday's evening board meeting. That was two weeks ago. First, one gentleman implied that the Buddy Lee could not use the gym because of the massive amount of roaches in the gym. In reality, they could not use the gym because the school was being chemically treated for the infestation problem, as was the case on the prior weekend when they could not use the gym. However, mentioning the real reason they could not use the gym, but have acknowledged the efforts that were being made by Ms. Clayton to correct the problem. Parents were notified on two different occasions by letter and by school messenger that this problem exists, and we were taking measures to treat the school. Parents have been properly notified, and Ms. Clayton is doing her best to correct the problem. We do not want roaches anymore than parents do, but we do not appreciate all the negative publicity. It is degrading and demoralizing to our school. We would rather see more support for the efforts being made to correct the situation. Second, we as a faculty want to voice our support for the implementation of a more secure and safe system of delivering and picking up students at school. Prior to the implementation of this drop-off pickup system, parents were in the building at least one hour before dismissal, waiting in the halls to pick up children. This disrupted instructional time and made it difficult to walk through the hallways. They rascuate in the cafeteria but would not respect the administration's request. Then, when school was dismissed, there was no secure procedure for releasing students to parents, guardians, at the end of the school day. In times past, this may not have been something we had to be careful about. But unfortunately, times have changed, and we can only be ever so cautious in monitoring the safety of children. Our new system of picking up students protects and ensures the safety of our children, and as a faculty, we support what is best for children. We believe that the safety of children is far more important than any other issue here, and we support Ms. Clayton for implementing this system for making our school a safer environment for children. We at Duval care about children and have high expectations of them. As in any school, you will have isolated issues with disgruntled parents, but this is not a reflection of the relationship between the majority of our parents, students, and teachers. On the whole, we are a school that excels, and we are a school striving for academic excellence. And as you can see, there's 44 signatures on the staff. I also want to point out a letter. If you recall, Mr. Tim Adkins was here for the Buddy Basketball last week. I am not going to read his letter, although I have permission to, but I just choose not to. I would highlight the... Or did highlight part of the letter for your information. And that is just the part I wanted to update you on prior to the delegations to be heard. Mr. President, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Ken Pointreau?
I'd like to introduce myself to the Board members and the audience here. My name is Ken Pointreau. I am a 1981 graduate of Duval High School, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lincoln County. There are a couple of issues that I would like to address tonight regarding the situation at Duval Elementary Middle School. It has been brought to my attention that teachers at Duval have been led to believe and/or they are under the impression that parents are out to attack them. While I understand that there are parents that have and have had issues with a teacher, I think that all parents will agree that as long as schools and teachers and students exist, these types of issues are to be expected. I myself, I would like to say thank you to the teachers of Duval. I realize that I can only speak for myself, but my complaints and concerns have nothing to do with the teaching staff at Duval. Instead, it has everything to do with the management and administration there. My experiences at Duval have been anything but professional.
Ms. Pointreau? I'd just like to remind you again, because, and I kind of advise the Board, anything indirectly that you're saying concerning personnel issue of an employee is not acceptable in the public. If this Board allows that to happen, then they have to possibly be responsible for the outcome. So, I'm just reminding the Board and you again, just to be knowledgeable with that, and so the Board.
And to this... I mean, I have not mentioned any names. Is that correct?
It's not mentioning names. You can be indirectly related to... When you talk about the management of the school, there's only one. There are two people in charge of that management.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm saying. Be a little careful.
So, I can speak of my experiences at Duval? Is that what you're telling me?
Anything that you say negatively directed towards an employee of the Lincoln County School system is not appropriate in public to be addressed. And I'm saying that not only to you, but to this Board.
Well, my...
Before you start...
Yes.
Let me ask you a question. Since she doesn't want to speak to the Board, can she...
Can I do...
Instead of addressing it publicly, can she give the... Her statements? She has her statements written out to the Board?
Of course.
You want to do that?
Okay. It's in actually rough form, but yes, I would like to do that.
If you want to give them in finished form tomorrow, they'll receive them.
Um...
It's up to you.
I'm just...
I'm just giving you that opportunity. They'll get them.
Okay. So, please...
It's up to you. If you want them tonight, they'll have them tonight. If you want to wait, give them tomorrow, they'll get them as soon as the mail gets to them.
Okay. I will wait till tomorrow. And actually, can I personally deliver those here myself? Will they be accepted in that manner?
You mean like to me?
Or to my secretary?
Right.
Yes.
And I can have evidence that those were received?
All you have to do is ask the Board members.
Okay. Very good.
Wait a minute. She'll head, Carol.
Because in my opinion, she has the right to inform us of problems that she has there. So, if we... It can't be there because we're going to a quick and vague assessment of that of giving us those statements. Well, I can't tell you what the difference is.
Public is the issue, not the statements themselves. There's nothing wrong with the Board receiving any information. But in the public, if you are attacking an employee, it's inappropriate and improper. The employee has rights. So, there's two ways that can be done. One can be given, like we talked about, if this Board felt like they wanted to hear it in executive session, that's another opportunity. But again, I would caution the Board, you cannot respond, even in executive session, to whatever charges, if there are charges, that would be brought forth. Because once you start to respond in public or in executive session, then you are biased, and you probably will be skipped in any type of hearing down the road if one would ever come to a hearing.
Is it possible that my comments could be heard in executive session without any comments from the Board? Is that...
Yeah. If they chose to do that.
Okay.
That's their priority.
And I'm kind of asking that the Board would choose to do that?
Well, I would think that we would give our points. So, I move to go into executive session.
And what that means for the public is everyone would leave except for the lady here.
I completely understand that, sir.
Temporarily. So, I made a motion that we... Executive session.
[inaudible]
All those in favor? To move into executive session? All those in favor?
Excuse me?
Yes. Aye. Aye. All opposed? We're now in executive session.
Come on up, Ms. Brogan. This is Mrs. Brogan. Yeah, we already...
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs. Brogan, I think we met a couple of weeks ago. I guess at this point, actually, I'm just here to...
Wait a minute. Hold on. Hold on one second. Let's just wait till everybody gets in.
Okay. All right. I guess at this point, I'm basically... I'm turning the questions around. One, I'd like to know what the policy and procedure is for reporting an incident that happens at school. If your child is involved in an incident, what is the policies and procedures in reporting that to the parent? Is there a timeframe? Or is there certain things that have to happen before it's reported to a parent? Say, a child is videotaped changing in the gym room, for instance, and your child was part of that, and you were not contacted. Is there policies and procedures in place that says that you have to be contacted if that situation is to happen?
I would assume you should be contacted. Should have been contacted.
I'm just saying hypothetically, if your child had them.
Hypothetically.
Okay. Last week, two weeks ago, I apologize, when we came in and we had discussed the roaches, and I had brought up a few issues, and there was an article in the paper, and you had made the comment in that article, hold on one second, that you felt that they were doing a good job at Duval.
Who?
You... It was your...
I do not recall the article.
Comment and article.
Do not remember a lot of its concerns, so I'm...
And the underlying issue with everyone being at these board meetings, that we have a problem with the administration and the school in itself. And you had stated that you felt that they were doing a good job at the school.
It depends on what area. They do a wonderful job, if you're talking about...
I think the teachers are great.
Teachers and administration. As far as this one incident, if you're referring to, Ms. Clayton, I'm saying I don't know the exact dates, but it's not her responsibility to get rid of roaches. Her responsibility is to place a call down here to our maintenance director, Mr. Dana Smith. And then, it's Mr. Dana Smith and the standard exterminating company's job to move on that. So, if there's a second phone call made, again, let's say nothing was done, and she recognized it, problem's getting worse, and she makes a second call, again, that's her responsibility to do that, but it stops. Only Mr. Smith can authorize for those things that go into place, like level three spraying or a level two, whatever it might be. And yes, I do think they do a good job.
Okay. I think that the article was last week, and everyone showing up here represents our opinion on that, and I think us as parents. And if you would speak to our children, survey them, give them a chance to speak without being pointed out. I think if you give our kids a chance to tell their side of the story, knowing they would not be retaliated on, that you get a totally different story. Because that's what we're given when they come home to us. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm stating facts. I'm telling you what our kids are coming home and telling us, and our kids are not having a positive experience in that school. I'm just going to make that one short and sweet. Your website has a new parent survey. A very first question is, what school does your child attend? West Hamlin is on there. Guyan Valley is on there. And Hamlin, PK through eight, is on there. How come Duval Middle School's not on there? How come Lincoln County High School's not on there? Why is it only the three schools? Why do we not get a chance to speak and take that survey on behalf of our children?
I'm not sure, but again, the appropriate person to talk with is Ms. Clayton?
No, this is on the Lincoln County Board of Education site. This is a...
I did not have to talk with Mr. Danny Daly. I'm not sure.
Danny Daly?
Yes, that's who I would talk to.
Okay.
Something like that, I would like to know.
All right. I appreciate the answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brogan. That's all the delegates that we have tonight. If you all want to stick around for the business, for the administrative section, you're more than welcome. You want to do a personnel hearing?
That's next on the...
That's next. Go ahead, Carol.
There's one thing that I want to clarify. A couple of letters that teachers wrote.
Aye.
I appreciate that they took the time to do that. But the coach, they had stated that the coach, that he couldn't practice because of the roaches. I don't think he said that. I think what he said was afraid the children was planning to be exterminating, literally. I'm thinking that he could not practice because of the roaches. He was a call off student.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. So, we want to go to, for the sake of Ms. Hamlin, we might want to go into executive session and take up the personnel.
I move. We're going to executive session.
Okay. Motion has been made to go into executive session regarding personnel matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We're now in executive session.
I think I made you election night.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion... in executive section, executive session, to cut the personnel.
I'll move, we're going executive session.
Okay, motion's been made to go into executive session regarding personnel matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. All opposed? We're going to executive session.
I think I met you election night.
You did?
Yeah, good to see you.
to suspend professional personnel, and to move that, uh, we suspend Tawana Holton for 20 days as a teacher at West Hamlin Elementary effective February the 9th, 2011, as provided Board of Duty Code 18A2-8 for violation of the employee code conduct.
I'll second that.
So, we want to move that to what now?
We're just getting-
We're moving. Okay. Motion's been made to move the, uh, personnel matter, um, on the agenda right before the administrative section. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we need a motion. You want to make a recommendation?
I recommend that, uh, Tawana Holton be suspended for 20 days, uh, 20 working days.
I'll make that. That's all the superintendent's recommendations.
Motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to the administrative section.
My part, man. I think, uh, on administrative, section A is quite clear. Uh, B, school volunteers, you can see those names. As far as C, uh, this is with Silden Learning, uh, this is an alternative to offer supplemental services that is required and paid from Title I funds. D, uh, is a revised contract, as you can see, and having a teacher assistant at West Hamlin Elementary. I think E is self-explanatory, same as F, out-of-state travel, and that out-of-state travel comes from the even start grant, in case you need to know that.
You've heard the administrative section? You all have any questions?
Yes. Unseen contracts with those seven students?
Yes.
How are those students chosen?
Parents have choices, if I understand that correct, correct?
They get, some might want teachers, some might want these services, and that's their choice, and that's given to them, and we offer those choices.
This wouldn't necessarily be restricted to Guyan Valley Middle School, with that teacher about the school also?
All kinds of schools.
Yes.
Is there any other questions on the administrative section? We have a motion. Accept administrative session?
I second.
Motion's been made. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Finance, Ms. Gandy, can you share with us?
Uh, we have employees $302,357.90, I have all employees here for review. Uh, we have a retirement, finance, Gil Vance, 23 and a half years of service for the board. I can see budget supplement, which is new money that we put into the budget of $415,644.69, and I've provided this spreadsheet.
She cannot talk very loudly, she's having a communicator.
Donna, oh, well, she's-
No, no, Donna.
She, Dr. Martin, I would ask that you disclose the sources of funding on those-
Okay.
If you don't care.
Okay, uh, on your, the spreadsheet, that's in your pocket, and then I kind of put it in a bold box, um, start on line 32, energy management, that's the program that Joe Parsons does, and it's actually a program where we say, if you need us to shut down our power usage for a, an emergency, we'll do that, so we got $7,000, we got a $7,000 check on that.
Is that Campbell's Fund?
AEB. It's a, it's put into a local project.
I think that's what's on it. What is the source of that?
AEB. No, it's another company. Yeah, it's an outside company.
Right, I'll put the AEB.
Okay, the next one, auto technology, that is where Jerry Kermans at the high school provides services to LCOC, he repairs their vehicles, so that's $11,000. Technology system specialist, that is some of the Obama IRA money, and we hired a person, a technology specialist at West Hamlin, I think his name is Alex Dance, and we hired one at the DuVall area, Earl Thomas-
Hanson.
Hanson.
Two.
Two, two positions, uh-huh. Uh, the next item is fresh fruit and vegetables for West Hamlin, that's federal money. The next item is fresh fruit and vegetables for Ranger, that's federal money. The next item is fresh fruit and vegetables for Hart's Primary. Uh, the next item is some state funding that youth offering support, and that's a program that Jeff Midkiff is working with, uh, with the assistance of, of the God Hearts, they definitely-
Michael Taryn.
Michael Taryn, mhm. Uh, the next item is safe and supportive schools, federal money. Student enrichment, that's federal money. And then the next ones are all formerly called budget digest funds, they call them community grants. Now, LCH softball, got $6,000, um, the softball also got $10,000, the boosters for the softball got $5,000, speech and debate at the high school got $15,000, the baseball got $12,000. And, um, we got a new safety access grant, and the local share is $11,000, we have that in as local share. Now, this one is a, is local share.
You have any questions?
I just have a question on the, uh, budget transfer. At this time, we haven't transferred any more funds for the acquisition of the Hart property.
There we go.
I guess you're kind of waiting on a queue as to what-
I, I've asked her to prepare something for us as an update at the next board meeting concerning the, uh, juries or trials that have occurred, and just give you all at least for those two, and we'll see what happens, but if we predict what it might be, and share with you that information at the next board meeting.
Also provided to go just a progress report for the Hart PKA, and I thought it might be of interest to you guys, something that I keep always, and also finding its statements for November, December, I'm kind of getting caught back up a little bit where Trina's been all, and I'm getting myself caught back up.
You have any more questions? We have a motion, accept financial section. The agenda?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a better second?
Sorry.
Donna, we have a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? All right, let's go to the personnel schedule.
I would have Ms. Lucas's place.
Okay, if you will, uh, look through each of the items, uh, if you have any questions on any of the items, I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Any motion?
No.
Yes ma'am.
I don't think that we train, I think this part, I may be the only one, I think I'm, I guess you don't think that we train for that, is that correct?
Which? What?
Not, not, not the personnel.
Her needs-
Not the profession.
No, her needs being on the personnel schedule.
Well, not the profession.
No, it's needs, you don't want to break things, but-
No, she's a greatness.
Part of it.
Probably be safe to do it just-
What's her name?
Norine Gaudin.
That he's commissioning, or saying, you know, he's not a member of the league, and just to be safe, whatever she wants to do.
Business central, be a wild decision.
The one that's safer?
Yes.
The one that's safer?
Could be good.
Norine Gaudin.
I'd like to move that we exclude and vote separately on the employment of Norine Gaudin as an appointment of a short, long-term professional personnel, that being moved as separate action.
Okay. All, all those in favor of the move?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? All right. Now, we need a motion to, uh, accept the personnel, except with regard to Norine Gaudin, because that's a sub. What's that? I make a motion that we accept for the, uh, personnel schedule, uh, with regard to Norine Gaudin. Motion's been made to accept personnel schedule. We have a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we make a motion to, um, to accept Norine Gaudin. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and, uh, Ms. Carol Smith reframing, who creeped and accused herself. All right. More concerns?
Go ahead.
OPD?
Yes, I have an update that we requested, and I'll pass these out, as, uh, you all will be hearing from these folks, uh, if you go up, you'll hear from Mr. Super. Um, Ms. Gandy, uh, of course, made this out to help you all, give you a little summary, a brief summary, and I'm sure she can elaborate at length if you would so choose, but, uh, again, in a few days, you'll have a complete briefing on this if you attend a school conference. So, it's just for your information to, and then prepare any questions you might have with the folks, uh, that's Mr. Super of Bowles and Lines.
Mr. Rich, let me make one comment then-
Yes ma'am.
On handout, uh, if you look at the 910 OEPa liability, that's a large number, you know, 3.6 million, and then the previous was 501,000, and the reason the previous was lower is because the state kicked in some money to, uh, to pray those calls, but 910 and going forward, you know, we have to recognize the full cost of that, so that looks a little odd, that's the reason.
Thank you. That's all I had to share with you.
Anybody else?
We received, uh, questions for the interview, for the new superintendent's interviews. Uh, are we going to look at those questions at some point to see if they're agreeable, if we're going to revise any of those, or anything like that at some point?
I was under the impression that they were just regular questions.
Well, that's going to need a look, at some point meet and say, yeah, these are the ones we want, or we have the opportunity or the chance.
Well, there's a place at the end of it, you can add, add any question you want, so, you know.
It's a lengthy form, and the last time we used these questions, I don't know, we even got three questions, so we even needed to, if I ask the form, make it look shorter. Can you hear me for it? Make it even.
Make it shorter or revise it.
Make it shorter or give more time in the interview for them to answer.
So, that's my question, are we, maybe the next time, can we just look at this and decide what we want, and we have a problem with that?
Well, then you're not going to candidate, you have, you have, you like me.
We're going to have to call, we're going to have to have me sit up.
And there, possibly near the number being brought in. I'd just like for us to, oh, just look at each question, make sure that they prep in the first others that they might want to answer.
Anything else?
I have something I'd just like to share with you tonight, in case it comes up about, um, there are some things that, uh, that new procedures put into DuVall, uh, and it was more or less to preserve instructional time and emphasis, and I would just like to read, uh, from the manual, OEPa manual, that we all had to go through, teachers, principals, every few years, it's, it's a big document, but I'd just like to read a couple things from it, and if you can, just recall it sometime if ever need be. Um, under 7.1.2 High Expectations, verification procedure, one of the things, verify the instructional time is emphasized. Under 7.1.3 Learning Environment, there's, uh, three things I'd like to share with you under verification procedures. Uh, one would be, uh, teachers are actively engaged in instruction, minimum teaching and learning interruptions, and instruction beginning on time and continuing until the end of class. I just want you to keep those in mind in future, if there's a delegation about, uh, procedures put in place, uh, for parents coming into the school and not having interruptions, it was just, it's something that we have to go by. I know a teacher's present tonight, administration, uh, and I know she puts the procedures, because it's my understanding, it was a little lax before, and she's tightened up the shift a little bit, and I think there's some, uh, resemblance, which I can understand that, and it's to be expected, but, uh, it is an environment to teach and have that conducive to learn, so just wanted to share with the board information that I probably won't hold this back yet, if you can help me remember, I appreciate it.
Does that coincide with the fact we're assuming that?
Correct.
Anything else? While moving adjourned, until March the 7th, 6 o'clock.
I second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.